Good morning, and I would like to welcome those that are in attendance here and those virtually. I'd like to also call to order the Taos County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting Tuesday, August 16, 2022. And for the record, it is 9:05. Madam Clerk, please call. Roll.
Commissioner Fambro.
Present.
Commissioner Gairos.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Vice Chair Brash.
Present.
Chair of the Hill.
Present. Mr. Foster, would you do us the honor and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be honored.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Vice Chair Brash, would you please?
I'd be happy to, thank you.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Approval of the agenda, commissioners, what are your wishes? Is there an approval?
Madam Chair, I move for approval with just a note, we don't have to change anything, but there's two other items from the New Mexico County's Board of Directors' meeting that I will cover under 13A, and Anissa will help me in making that presentation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, and a second. Approval of agenda, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair of the Hill.
Yes. Citizens' concerns. So if there is any public that would like to comment, citizens wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes. And just a reminder, no action may be taken. We'll start with anyone in the chambers. Mr. Foster, please.
My name is Herbert Foster, formerly Matthew Foster. A couple of years ago, I changed my name for my dad. I work at Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, where I'm the Development Director. In the last couple of years, the pandemic has certainly had its impacts on us as an organization and the youth of the community. Nonetheless, we are standing strong in serving the youth and the communities we serve through conservation and drug and alcohol prevention programming. We have a canine leadership program where Corps members work to train service dogs. Right now, as we speak, the crews are at the office participating in a certification for mental health first aid. That's something we've added to the curriculum to help Corps members adjust to the stress and challenges that are out there and to equip them with the tools that they need to be of service to other people who are dealing with a mental health crisis. So right now, they're in the classroom getting that training, getting ready to go out on the spike. Spike is they'll be camping for eight days out in the wilderness doing any type of conservation projects. The reason I'm here is to ask for your support in recruiting Corps members. If anything, the pandemic has had quite an impact on our ability to recruit. We're about half the numbers that we normally are. And it's a shame because no Corps members, no Corps. And so we see it that way. And so we're just asking for your help, for help from the listening audience and the staff to help us recruit. If you know anyone 18 to 25 who's looking for a job outdoors, Corps members get paid, they get a scholarship, they get life skills training, they get practical on-the-job work experience. Ultimately, our mission is to provide a pathway to a healthy and productive life for youth and young adults of the community. They get the kind of skills that employers are really looking for. They learn hard skills out in the field, but they really learn the skills that are necessary to survive in life and in the workforce, about communication, diversity, leadership, problem-solving, self-care. And teamwork is a very critical, a very critical life skill that they learn that I think will, I know will carry over into the rest of their lives. So I do have some flyers for you, if I may, to maybe leave some here and invite anyone. If you know somebody 18 to 25, crews in the fall start in late August, so the time is now to apply. So anyone 18 to 25 looking for a job, please send them to youthcorps.org.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Yes. Is there anyone else present here that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's go on to those that are in attendance virtually. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please unmute yourself or raise your hand.
Good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning, Matthew here and fellow Taos County Commissioners. My name is Julie Katie Hill Romero. I am the President of the Taos County Fair Board Association. First of all, I'd like to thank you for all of your support throughout the years. And secondly, I'd like to cordially invite all of you to be in participation and attendance of our annual Taos County Fair. I have a couple of things just as far as schedule of events. We commence on Thursday, August 18, and then have some of our small animal shows on Friday, August 19, with our large livestock show and auction that will be on Saturday, August 20. The shows start in the morning, 9:00 a.m., and the auction will commence at 3:00 p.m. And we'd like to invite you all to be present in attendance, and we would appreciate your support. And as always, thank you for your continuous support.
Thank you, Julie K. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Please unmute yourself, raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. And Commissioner Vice Chair, do you see? Am I missing? No? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to presentations. And on 7A, Discussion Regarding the Proposed Chevron Water Rights Transfers. And I believe in attendance virtually is Mr. Marcus Rael, Jr., from Robles, Rael and Anaya. Please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Mr. Harmio, can everyone hear me well?
Yes.
I'm here today to answer questions that the Commission may have regarding Chevron's proposed water rights transfers. As many of you may know, Chevron filed some applications with the Office of the State Engineer to transfer water to a few of the Aseki associations and the mutual domestics in Taos in order to help them meet their requirements under the Abeta adjudication settlement, as well as application to transfer some water to the village of Cuesta to help the village meet its future water needs. The State Engineer's Office denied those applications. Since that time, Chevron has made a determination that with its requirements for its ongoing remediation and cleanup of the Cuesta mine site, that it does not have sufficient water rights to complete both its cleanup and to meet its obligations under those transfers with these water rights being denied by the Office of the State Engineer. Now, the Office of the State Engineer is not denying that those water rights ever existed. What they are saying is that the mine did not put to beneficial use about 1,400 acre-feet of water that it had owned over the course of the operation of the mine site. And so that issue has been, as I said, denied by the State Engineer's Office and has now been taken to litigation by Chevron. And we have no idea how long that process is going to take. But for now, all water rights transfers are being put on hold by Chevron until such time as this issue can be resolved through the litigation process. And Madam Chair, I stand for any questions that you or the Commission may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Fambro.
Well, Marcus, at least now we know how many they thought they had. I mean, that was always a secret. I always understood it to be about a third more of what they're committing to is, I don't know where I got that number, I don't know if Brent had ever heard, just over 2,000 as well, and I'm sure you have, and I don't know what Dr. Miller maybe knew about that, but at least now we know what they thought they had. So that's at least a plus in my book.
Yes, Commissioner. I mean, they have more water rights than the 1,400 acre-feet. The 1,400 acre-feet are those that were deemed to be abandoned and not being put to beneficial use by the Office of the State Engineer.
Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Rael, for being here. Just, I'm curious, what is the amount, or how many water rights, or how much water does Chevron estimate they need for the cleanup?
You know, Madam Vice Chair, I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer to that. The water rights are going to vary throughout the different stages of the cleanup. They were using a lot of water rights on the tailings pond to keep it wet so that they could, you know, so that none of the tailings would blow before they put the cover on top of the tailings pond. But that process has stopped as they've put the initial cover on top of the tailings pond. There is quite a few water rights that are going to be required at the actual mine site itself, but I don't know what the actual number is. That's a Chevron internal number. All I know is what has been made public through both the applications and through my representation of the village of Cuesta.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, I might just, another question, because I'm affected as a member of one of the mutual domestics. How many mutual domestic water associations in Taos County are affected by this back-and-forth among the water rights that originally were supposed to go to organizations like the mutual domestics in Taos County?
My understanding, but don't hold me to this number, Madam Vice Chair, but my understanding is they were going to sell to two different Aseki associations and I believe seven mutual domestic water associations. But that number may vary. I, of course, was not involved in those transactions because I don't represent Chevron, but I think about, Mary Humphries would know as the lawyer for the mutual domestics. She would know the answer, how many, but I believe seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Mr. Rael. And tell me again your position in this controversy.
I'm here today to report to you as a contract attorney for Taos County. However, I also happen to be the village attorney for the village of Cuesta, and we were going to be the recipient of some of those water rights. One of the applications that was filed by Chevron was to transfer some water rights to the village of Cuesta in order to help the village meet its over-diversion requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Rael. The water rights that were to be transferred to the mutual domestics, that was never started. I mean, this is to comply with the Abeta settlement. Obviously, now that Abeta settlement is dismantling before us as a result of the State Engineer's They were never given the water rights at the very onset of the Abeta settlement. I'm just trying to understand what the delay was for the transfer to the mutual domestics.
My understanding is, Commissioner O'Donnell, that, you know, the Abeta settlement, adjudication settlement happened, and then the mutual domestics were looking for someone to sell them water. Chevron finally made the decision around 2016 to completely shut down the mine operations for good. And at that time, they started doing an inventory and looking at what they had, and at some point, they put those water rights on the market. And over, my understanding is, over several years of negotiation came to terms with the mutual domestics and the Aseki associations. And at that point, they made an agreement to sell each mutual domestic the water that it was required under the Abeta adjudication. But the applications were not filed until earlier this year. And I don't know what the delay was. I don't know what caused that. That would be between Chevron and the mutual domestics.
Okay, and so there has, there have been no transfer of water rights to the mutual domestics date then, is that correct?
That's correct. The transfers were filed before the Office of the State Engineer, and then the transfers were denied by the Office of the State Engineer.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dimas, please. I know you're representing the mutual domestic, is that correct?
The Taos Valley, the water domestic. Anyway, yes, there's actually nine mutual domestics that are being, that I represent, and that's how many, and it's about 120 around, I can't give you the exact number, acre-feet of water. And the reason that they were not transferred is because the state has not led us, did not give us the right to go ahead and spend the money that's already been allocated to buy them. And so we're working with them right now to do that. If that would have happened a couple of years ago, we would have already have had them. So that's how it transpired, and we didn't get the water rights because it was a transfer of money is what caused it.
Thank you, Mr. Dimas. So, Mr. Dian, my question is, first of all, a comment is that obviously water rights are so important, and this is going to affect Taos County in its entirety. You know, as we think about housing and how we're trying to go forward with housing, and so this is really going to affect the ability to really provide that infrastructure that, you know, the need for water. But I'm wondering, my question to you is, what are we going to do? Obviously, you're representing Taos County and Cuesta, and it feels to me like we need to do something as, you know, on behalf of the county to say, wait a minute, you know, we have an interest here, we can't just not be, we can't be quiet about it, is what I'm getting at. So my question to you is, what is the intent? What are your intent to make sure that we're being heard at the State Engineer's Office?
Well, Madam Chair, my recommendation, the village of Cuesta obviously is going to file a brief in support of Chevron and in support of the transfer of these water rights. And I would encourage that Taos County do the same, that Taos County file a brief in support of the transfer of these water rights before the Taos, before the Office of the State Engineer Hearings Unit. From there, the litigation will most likely be appealed to state court, and I would recommend that Taos County intervene in those proceedings in support of the transfer of the water rights at that time as well.
Okay. Commissioner Fambro.
Marcus, will that be filed in this district court, or does it have to start in Santa Fe? We have a better chance of winning if it's here, I believe.
It will, it will be filed up in Santa Fe because it is a litigation with the state of New Mexico, and so therefore it'll be in the first judicial district up in Santa Fe.
And they have, over the years, tried to take those water rights as well, that area of the state, so that really makes me leery I wish we could get it transferred to here.
Yeah, I mean, I have talked to Chevron's attorneys about trying to move the litigation to the Eighth Judicial District Court, but we're still down in the State Engineer Hearings Unit, so we're still a little ways to go before we come to that step. And there is a chance that we win down at that level and the State Engineer doesn't appeal it. These are, it is important to know, adjudicated water rights that have been fully adjudicated and are owned by Chevron. And so they have a pretty strong case as to, as to the use and ownership of those rights.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I do. I have a question, though, for Mr. Dimas. You have counsel. If you could, you have counsel to fight this issue, is that correct?
Yes, that's Mary Humphrey.
Okay.
She wasn't able to attend because she had another thing to do in Santa Fe. She's over there working on some other projects in Santa Fe.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rael, give us a timeline of what this looks like, what gets filed next, and then just give us a timeline, how long we're talking this is going to take.
Well, as of right now, Chevron has requested mediation with the Office of the State Engineer. That process could take anywhere from three to four months before that mediation is held and resolved. If that mediation is successful, then we'll find out what that resolution is, and I assume everybody will be mostly happy. If the mediation is unsuccessful, following that mediation, there will be a briefing schedule that will be put out by the State Engineer Hearings Unit, at which time it'll be, they'll probably put a briefing schedule of three to six months for parties to file their briefs in support of or against the transfer of these water rights at that point. So we're talking probably middle of next year before we're looking at having to file or have anything ready to file. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Madam Chair, Mr. Robles, what I'm hearing then is this is a matter that the next commission needs to take up because of the timeline. And I'm not sure, I mean, if we have any standing to intervene in a case like this because this is, we don't have any fight in this game other than keeping the mutual domestics whole. But that's just my opinion. I would just encourage, in the meantime, I don't know if the mutual domestics need these water rights right away, that I guess they're going to have to look elsewhere in the meantime. But if the issue is the state hasn't appropriated the money, I'd sure like to understand why the state has not given money to the mutual domestics under the Abeta settlement. I don't know if you can answer that, but I don't know why there's a holdup at the state. And is it because of, Madam Chair, if Mr. Dimas can answer that, is that okay?
Please come forward. If he can answer that, thank you.
Well, there was a couple of things that we had to do, jump through hoops to get the approval for the money. And it seems like, and I hate to say this, but the last administration lost a bunch of the paperwork. We had turned it in. We had to turn in a bunch of, and file a bunch of paperworks, how many people we had, where our wells were, make sure that everything was up to date as far as our record-keeping and everything. And so we had to redo it all over again, and that put us back several years. And that was one of the, that was the main reason why we couldn't get, we couldn't move forward. We finally got that part settled, and then now we're getting all our model tests done so we can see how much offsets we have that we need to come up with from each association so we can have those ready so when we do get those water rights transferred, we have the other water rights that we need for each domestic for the offsets.
Madam Chair, who is, when you say past administration, who are you referring to?
State governor.
State?
The governor.
The governor, under Susana Martinez?
Ms. Martinez, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And with all due respect, Commissioner O'Donnell, I think we do have a fight in the game. I think this is our community. We need to make sure that water rights remain here. And so I would say, I know it's not for approval here, but I would say that we should consider being loud, vocal, and make sure that we can hold on to those water rights, do all that we can.
And I do agree that the last thing we want to see is these water rights disappear and go south, or worse, east. And we need to keep them in the state, but mostly we need to keep them in this county. We don't want to see more water rights leave the county as they have before. And that was, I think that was tragic that we lost those other water rights. And we need to see if we can do anything just to keep them here.
That's correct. Always be that, right? We know that very well. Anything else, commissioners? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I look forward to hearing from you as to any further instruction you may have on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're now going to 8 on minutes, 8A, Approval of the July 19, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, move to approve the July 19, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair of the Hill.
Yes. Okay, Approval of the July 27, 2022 Special Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the July 27, 2022 Special Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair of the Hill.
Yes. Approval of the July 28, 2022 Joint Meeting Minutes, and I will make a, I will move to approve.
I will second, Madam Chair.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please call for the vote.
Commissioner Fambro.
Abstain.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Chair of the Hill.
Yes. Okay, Approval of the August 2, 2022 Regular Meeting Minute.
Madam Chair, move for the approval of the August 2, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes.
And I will second that. So there's motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Chair Brash.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Chair of the Hill.
Yes. Okay, now we're on the consent agenda. A is Approval of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Grant Agreement for Purchase and Equipment Fire Apparatus for Multiple Fire Districts in Taos County, grant number 22, I'm sorry, number 22-G3035 in the amount of $50,000. Reversion date, 6/30/2024. We have Approval of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Grant Agreement for Purchase and Equipment Patrol Vehicles for the Taos County Sheriff's Office in Taos County, grant number 22-G3036 in the amount of $110,000. Reversion date, 6/30/2024. Next is Approval of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Grant Agreement for the Plan, Design, Construct, and Renovate its Detoxification Facility in Taos, in Taos County, grant number 22-G3044 in the amount of $195,000. Reversion date, 6/30/2026. And next is Approval of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Grant Agreement for the Purchase and Equipment, and Equip, excuse me, an Ambulance for the Taos County Emergency Medical Services Department in Taos County, grant number 22-G3034 in the amount of $250,000. Reversion date, 6/30/2024. Approval of the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Grant Agreement for the Plan, Design, Construct, Renovate, Equip, and Furnish Improvements to the Historic County Courthouse in Taos, in Taos County, grant number 22-G3043 in the amount of $2,168,120. Reversion date of 6/30/2026. Next is Approval of the State of New Mexico Department of Transportation Grant Agreement for the Plan, Design, Construct, and Improve Blueberry Hill Road, including repaving in El Prado in Taos County, IDF 3064, New Mexico DOT Control Number C5213064 in the amount of $300,000. Reversion date of 6/30/2025. And last, we have Approval of the Purchase of Five 2022 Ram 1,500 SSV Trucks for Taos County Sheriff's Office through State Price Agreement. The total amount of purchase is $198,435, utilizing the LEPF funds, Legislative Appropriations and Capital Enhancement Funds. And that is the consent agenda. What is the wishes of the Commission?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item E.
Item E?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the Consent Agenda as read Items A through D and F and G. approve the Consent Agenda as read Items A through D and F and G.
I will second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve items of the Consent Agenda A through D and F and G. Call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. Okay, so now we're going to take item E.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of quick questions. This is the appropriation from the Congresswoman.
This is appropriation from Governor Lujan Grisham.
Okay, so it's not, okay. That appropriation, does that go through DFA too, or not?
No, that'll be a direct allocation to the county.
Okay, I did see there's Art in Public Places of $21,000. Does this apply to this appropriation?
Yes, it would.
Okay, and so then my question would be, could could the restoration of the murals be used the $21,000 for this, or are we going to have to find a piece of artwork for?
The question would be better suited to the State of New Mexico. I can't remember the specific office, but there is an Arts in Public Place office that that could answer that question.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to point that out, how that would be used, and if it could be used for restoration of the murals, preservation, that that would be, I think, a good idea. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. With that, I make a motion to approve State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration Grant Agreement for the Plan, Design, Construct, Renovate Equipment, Furnish Improvements to the Historic Courthouse in Taos, in Taos County, Grant Number 22 dash G3043 in the amount of $2.168,127 million with a reversion date of 6/30/2026.
And there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes, and I just want to take a moment to thank Lori Montoya, Grants Administrator. This is a lot of work. I'm sure she's been super busy, so thank you, Ms. Montoya. I see you on virtually. Thank you very much. Moving on, Resolutions and Ordinances. We've got, let's see, 10A, Discussion, Consideration, and Approval of Resolution Number 2022-42, Adopting the 2024 dash 2028 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. And with us, which we refer to as the ICIP, Ms. Montoya, I believe you're going to take this, right?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Hadameo. Before you are our ranked priorities that Brent and Jason and I reviewed and discussed. And the decision was made for those that are on the ICIP list. We have for 2024 12 items, 2025, four items, or three items, I'm sorry, and 2026, one item. And I stand for any questions. And along with this sheet of our summary is the resolution that is annually adopted to send over to DFA.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, I'm just wondering how the Tom Holder Bridge Road Project got moved up to number four, and it is above the detox. We're submitting this page, or are we submitting only five?
This year, we're submitting this page.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, I think you might be thinking of the Legislative Appropriations. This, these, page one and two will actually go over to Department of Finance and Administration.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-42, adopting the 2024-28 ICIP.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I've seen none. Call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 10B is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Resolution 2022-45 Suspending the $5 Minimum Penalty on Delinquent Property Taxes and Imposing the Statutory Civil Penalty for Tax Year 2022. And I believe Ms. Paula Santi, Stebbin County Treasurer, is she available? No. Mr. Hadameo, will you be speaking?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. This is a resolution that we do annually that is suspending the $5 Minimum Penalty on Delinquent Property Tax under statutory civil penalty for the tax year 2022. I believe we've done this in, for probably four or five years now.
We have.
And so it's something pretty standard. Stand for any questions? If I can't answer, I think Mr. Autio can probably jump in there, but it's something that we've done every year.
That is correct, I do recall.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-45, Suspending the $5 Minimum Penalty on Delinquent Property Taxes, imposing the statutory civil penalty for the tax year of 2022.
And I will second that. And so there's motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes. Next, Discussion and Consideration Regarding Ordinance 2022-3, Sign Regulations. And there's a draft. Mr. Autio will be presenting, I believe. It's good to see you, Mr. Autio.
Morning, Commission. This matter has been knocking around since COVID. We have been discussing it, and finally, it really is time to get the amendments that we need to get done on the sign ordinance done. This wasn't a comprehensive review, but instead focused primarily on cleaning up. This was an old 1996 ordinance that we had on the books, so we did some cleanup from that time. There was some old language in it that dealt with how we would implement the ordinance and what would happen to signs that currently existed that were not in conformance with the ordinance. That's not the case now, so that's been removed. But the primary purpose, and the only other thing that we've changed, is making the language of our ordinance not content-specific for the regulation of temporary signs. So as I stated at the last hearing, this is because there's a very narrow ruling done by the United States Supreme Court saying we can't regulate content. Now, I personally have some issues with the way they decided that, because there are different types of temporary signs that it would be nice to handle differently. For example, real estate signs are much different than political signs that are much different than garage sale signs, business temporary signs, and so forth. However, the Supreme Court has spoken, so we then jump, or we get sued if we don't. So this is a cleanup, making, and it actually, the nice part about it is, it's a much simpler ordinance to enforce. And Rachel's here to speak for planning, but basically what it does is it says you may have a temporary sign for a period of 60 days. There is one question that we can talk about, about whether or not anyone wanting a temporary sign should have to inform zoning administration. During an election season, that would get incredibly burdensome for all parties concerned. My recommendation would be to take that out and just only regulate it based upon complaints. And also, zoning always has the legal authority, as well as NMDOT, our Public Works folks, to remove signs that have been placed illegally in right of way. We don't have to give notice. They can simply be removed out of right of way. The other issues that come up that are a little bit more difficult to regulate are if someone, if a candidate goes out during an election in the dark of the night and places signs all over in places that are illegal, that they may not have permission from property owners on. That happens a lot on vacant properties. People will put political signs on the corners in vacant properties, and they won't have the permission of the property owner. But at that point, that's a private matter. We don't know that. But if the owner complains about how this sign got there, then we could assist them in getting it removed. So I think that, I don't see any real downside to not regulate it more than that, but as I said, Rachel should weigh in on that. And then we will, this is just a discussion today, so I want any feedback. There is that one cleanup that I already mentioned about taking out the notice part. I just don't think
I agree.
that makes a lot of sense. And I don't think we need heavier regulation than that. But again, I'm not the enforcement officer, so I'll shut up. Rachel, you want to comment on that?
And I think Commissioner, Vice Chair has a quick question for you.
Just real quick, because, thank you, Madam Chair, what you just said, Mr. Autio. Is that referring to, about the notice to the Planning Department? Is that what we are looking at on Page 7 under temporary signs? The owner of the temporary sign shall send notice to the Taos County Planning Director informing them of the date the sign is erected and the estimated date
Correct.
that's what we're considering potentially not putting Rachel in team three?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Rachel.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair of the Hill, Commissioners, Mr. Hadameo, Mr. Autio, thank you. Yeah, I think this is going to help us out a lot, especially with code compliance, especially during certain times of the year, I'll say, where there's a lot of temporary signs out there. Code compliance is out there heavily enforcing signs that are in the right of way, signs that are illegally placed. Individuals, they will just go and put up a sign on a person's property without asking for permission, and it kind of gets a little bit cumbersome for individuals. So with this, this will help out a lot with us, because it'll help regulate things a little bit more. I think, too, that asking for notice might be a little bit on the extreme side in certain situations, but being that we can't say we want it for this and not for that, maybe going back to the old regulations of where it says that the temporary sign has to be removed within a certain time period, and rather than saying, you know, if you put in your notice and with the expiration date how it reads now, it's up to you all. However, you guys feel appropriate, we'll go ahead and proceed that way. But this is really going to help us out a lot. Another thing that we also wanted to do was we wanted to clean up the sign ordinance a little bit more, not so much specifically to temporary signs, but also it is very restrictive on a regular sign when it comes to colors, lettering designs, and whatnot. And so I think that's also been taken out of the section here as well, which will help us out. We've been, I know that Rudy had been working in the past on doing a complete revision on this sign ordinance, and so he's put in a couple of highlights here that'll help us get by through it. One thing is, is that with the regular sign ordinance, we don't have a lot of new businesses coming in through the county, so the number of sign permits is very minimal. So it's not a high volume, as in the town of Taos or other areas, that there's a lot of business attraction. So otherwise, I stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I do have one more quick question. Thank you so much, Rachel, and for working on this. You just mentioned the restrictions around like lettering and colors and so on. I did notice that on Page 11, there are still some prohibited colors. And I'm wondering if that's, they seem like the very bright kind of neon colors, and I'm wondering if that's potentially for safety reasons, like are there, you know, if something is chartreuse or blaze orange, that that might be to the eye and a quick, at a quick glance, a little distracting, that maybe that's a safety traffic kind of sign? Is that why those are still in there? We prohibit blaze orange, hot pink fluorescent colors, and chartreuse.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Rehill, Vice Chair Brush. Yes, and I believe that is the reason. Those are more fluorescent colors. And so by being more specific on those colors, that's been in place. Well, this ordinance is from 1996, so, and that's one of the reasons we don't want that fluorescent colors, because especially at night, if there's emergency personnel and, you know, they're looking for a place or whatever, it's going to bring that highlighted with the lights and whatnot. So
Thank you.
just to detract from the nuisance, I guess.
Thank you. And just, I promise just one last quick question. During campaign season, when we drive south through Rio Grande and Santa Fe Counties, we see much bigger candidate signs. Is this now the changes here? Will they allow for those much larger signs also to be utilized in Taos County?
Chair Rehill, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Brush? I believe that unfortunately that it will not allow for that, because according to this, it's only going to allow for a sign up to four square feet, if I'm not mistaken.
But Madam Chair, there was just a challenge that was ruled on by either the first judicial districts or something that we had to allow those now, I thought. Mr. Autio?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Fambro, the issue, and that's one of the reasons why it seems like it would be nice to separate some signs out. You don't want a 10 by 10-foot garage sale sign, for example. That would be rather obnoxious. Or maybe it would be real tasteful, I don't know. But the point is, if we'd have to deal with signs all the same, then it does apply to political signs right now. Signs, political signs are of a certain size. So to comply with the Supreme Court regulation, we met, I mean, we can think about that, because it is a good point, along highways. You can have bigger signs, because people are driving past at a higher speed. So, but we'd have to allow them for all temporary signs. So we can look, we can work with planning and zoning on that a little bit to see perhaps how other jurisdictions have handled that problem, because I don't see any issue for folks running for office along Highway 68, placing larger signs there. I mean, that's logical. But right now, we'd have to allow larger real estate signs and so forth. And we may not be able to get away from that. So we'll bring you a report back when we, we'll have to bring this back for publication, and then also then for final action. So there's a couple more bites at the apple.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I do have a few questions about billboards. Are we going to allow new ones? Because in the past, we've had we've restricted new billboards. And we only have those that are existing grandfathered in. I do not want to see more billboards going up as a result of this ordinance. So what's the story on the billboards?
Chair Rehill, Commissioner O'Donnell, I believe those are still going to be restricted. That does not change. Whatever is in place now is going to be, remain in effect, and nothing new will be allowed in.
Will not be, okay. And I don't see it here in the ordinance, so you'll confirm that, okay.
I believe in Section 1-5, I don't have page numbers on my copy, I apologize. Exemptions 1-5, number two, bulletin boards. It says bulletin boards not over eight square feet and five feet in height when the same are located on the premises of said home institutions.
Okay, I don't see, it's not in there, so I think it needs to go in there. We don't want this sign ordinance to create more billboards, at least I don't. The other thing is the political signs, 60 days. I want to make sure that conforms with the Secretary of State's sign rules for political campaigns. I think there's a discrepancy, because after an election, signs are supposed to be down within three days. So I don't want anyone to misinterpret this. So I don't want anyone to misinterpret this, that hey, I can just keep the sign up because our sign ordinance supersedes the Secretary of State's. These political signs need to come down in three days is the state law.
That is correct.
So can you just make sure that that is addressed in this ordinance? Because you've got, political signs can be up for 60 days. But I think it just needs more clarification.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, the problem with that is, is that there, there aren't any specific regulations from the Secretary of State on signs. It's left to the local jurisdictions. That has been the way they've, political signs have been traditionally regulated, is that they come down within three days after the election. But, and then that gives them, this would give them 60 or 57 days prior to the election to have them up. So the, they would have to bring them down. I mean, the whole idea is get your name out there in your face early. And then, so the 60 days, they couldn't keep it longer than that. But we can't make a specific regulation for political signs that's different than other temporary signs. That's the key. So it would be hard to craft something. I mean, I'm sure we could come up with something that everything had to be, if there was an event occurring, that the sign is advertising, that then it would have to be down three days after, you know? And then that would cover a whole lot of different things. But we have to, it has to be a general regulation, not specific to political signs. We can take a look at that, too.
Madam Chair, if you could quote the Secretary of State's rule regarding removal of political signs, and you can't?
There's not.
There's no specific regulations. It's, it's one of those rules that has arisen because almost every jurisdiction regulates signs. It's one of the, it comes in all political campaign literature. You've got to remove your signs within three days afterwards. It's just a, more of a custom and practice because of all of the local regulations.
Okay, I think it's a guideline though, too. I mean, they can cite a political candidate for not taking down signs, and if they don't, they can fine him.
Madam Chair, we did have Ms., Ms. Montoya and Ms. Martinez reviewed the ordinance. Anytime it came from the attorneys, I, I sent it back down. So we were, I was constantly making sure that, that they were, that it would meet any election requirements.
Thank you for that, yes. And Vice Chair?
Oh, Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Donnell, I think that, I mean, it's a great point that you're raising about removing the temporary or event signs. I, I think on page seven, there's an, an item, number 11 right now, event sign, and it does say that, actually, that might not apply. It says that they shall be removed within three days after the event, but maybe that doesn't apply because it says event signs can be erected no earlier than 14 days prior to the event, which we all know would not work for a campaign.
We'll take a look. And it may be that we just need to broaden that language to cover all types of signs.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Bee Hill, Commissioner O'Donnell, one idea that I had and Mr. Altio is maybe perhaps placing it within the definition of sign temporary, signs including but not limited to realtor, political or garage sale signs that are up for a timeframe not to exceed 60 days. And then we could continue that to say, and shall be removed within three days after said event. And that should, that should cover that.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, great. Thank you for your feedback. We appreciate it.
Chair. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Appreciate the hard work on this and listening to us in regards to it. Okay, going, moving on, we are at 10D, excuse me, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Resolution 2022-46, Proclamation Calling For An Election To Be Held In Conjunction With The General Election On November 8, 2022, To Fulfill The Referendum Requirement On The Following Issue, The Imposition Of A County Gross Receipt Tax In The Amount Of One Quarter Of 1%, Which Gross Receipt Tax Revenue Shall Be Used For Any County Purposes, Including But Not Limited To Fire Protection And Emergency Management Services. Mr. Haramio?
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Chief Cordova will hand to the majority of this presentation. I do want to apologize, we do have a typo on letter D. It should read Emergency Medical Services. So the attached resolution is correct. Originally, it came over from outside counsel, not Mr. Altio, as management services, Chief Cordova or Director Medina caught, caught that and we made sure it was changed within the, the resolution.
Thank you.
That reads correctly in the resolution.
Thank you for pointing that out. And Commissioner Fambro?
Okay, before we start the new presentation, I want to go back to the previous conversation, if we could, on a couple of points, and I know Mikey can help us through that. That might be part of, I'm stealing your thunder, but
No, you're fine.
The comment was made during the last discussion that this was fire and EMS only. That's not what is in the agenda item. And then the second point I wanted to make is, I, I don't know what would, you know, smooth things over, but the comment was made that this would stay just to the county. And I know for a fact that between 600 and 700 calls at Taos Fire runs 65% are county calls. I really wish we could reconsider the thinking on that. And Mikey, I don't know if you've had time to, to look at that and see if you could come up with something, but when we talked about this originally, it was always including and, I mean, because if we lost their outside protection district responses, we'd be in trouble. Not only would it cost us a lot of money, it will cost citizens their ISO rating in the areas that OV has worked hard to get rated, to make sure that the people are getting the, the ratings. And we don't want to do that. That, that would be a significant change to people's insurance policies. And, you know, there's other things that there's problems, you know, and, and I want to talk to Mr. Altio offline about a simple MOU to where their attorney is allowing them to drive for Chris when they need to. And it's, it's just a simple thing. I checked with Grace Phillips, she supports the idea. Now we know what we got to do. I mean, they're willing to help. We got crossways with them, and I don't want this to be going against what's right. Because, like I said, there's, there's over 400 calls that they respond to outside the city limits. And yes, the ambulance goes in there into the city and everything, and we always had that trade off and everything. But this is a way now that there can be a, it's, it's beneficial and I think it's only what's right. Thank you.
Commissioner Fambro, before, Mikey, you
Hi.
Do the presentation. I thank you for what you just said. You know, we have, we are making strides on, on working with other entities and, and we need to, this is, the mentality that we have to continue with is working together for the sake of the community. So, thank you.
And it's a countywide tax, so
Yes.
It's, it's being paid by people inside and, and stuff like that. So to me, it just makes sense. I hope you reconsider, Mikey. I, let's hash it out if we have to.
Thank you, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing? So in talking, we did have a meeting with Town of Taos yesterday, the mayor, the manager. It was a good meeting, it really was. And we brought up the ambulance thing. So we do want to do an MOU, that way Taos Fire is covered and there, you know, if something happens, they're covered, they can drive for us. So that's first and foremost what we want to take care of. That's a small fish in the big pond that we can take care of pretty quick. The other thing in regards to the tax, I, I remember exactly what I said, and it was posted on Facebook, that this is going to sting yet, because at the time, we didn't know the exact number that it would come in as. So looking at the numbers, talking to the managers, talking to Fire Marshal Hampton in, in the meeting yesterday, we have come up with numbers. I've talked to chiefs, the three municipality chiefs, plus Eddie Joe from Taos Fire. And there's numbers that we will give out there, and everybody's going to get a, a portion of this tax.
That's awesome.
And everybody does understand that, yes, we are trying to establish our goal, but really what it is too, is help out EMS, because we do need that third truck.
Absolutely.
And a portion of this is going to go to EMS, obviously. So what we had proposed for right now, because this will be the first time we get the tax and we have to see what our revenues is, is right now, Village Acuesta, Taos Ski Valley and Red River would get $125,000. Town of Taos would get $250,000 for at least the first portion of this, to see where we're at, to see where we come in. And then from there, we can always adjust. That's not a big deal. And I think words were taken out of context, and I understand. I, I really do understand, you know, my words got missed, you know, I get where people were a little upset. I totally understand that, and I apologize for the way I worded it, but we do want to help, but we also have to help ourselves out and make that ambulance, get a third truck moving, you know, for the Pinyosco area, just in general for our crews. We, two trucks, we should have had three trucks 10 years ago. And now we're starting to get movement, and I thank you all for that. And Commissioner Gallegos, if he's online, but that's where we are with it. There's really nothing new presentation, just, just wanted to clarify that. And I understand, yes, everybody probably wants more and people probably won't think that that's enough, but we got to try and we got to see what comes in.
Yes. Commissioner Fambro?
I still don't like the language of the tax shall be used for any county purpose, including but not limited to. That's not what we voted for, that's not what was presented to us.
We did change that up. It's corrected, the online packet.
On the ballot question, we caught that, myself, Chris and James. So it's, it's taken out. It does not say that anymore. We took that out completely.
So that's, that's what I think happened, only change, and we, that's the way it read on Thursday, we changed it by Friday, but
Okay.
We got to pack it a little better to hear you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Fambro, the reason that the original language came in that way is if you'll recall, a few years ago, when the state legislature changed all of our grocery receipts tax sections. So this is coming from a general tax section. We can, by ballot measure, dedicate it to a specific purpose, but then it is allowed for any purpose under the greater, broader language of the state statute. But by doing this ballot language, we then limit our uses, ourselves, to those purposes. So we cannot use it if we do that ballot language for any other purposes.
Well, that matches the presentation, that matches the excitement of everybody. And now I'm way more excited that we're taking care of the munis as well. And so, okay, I'm happy. Sit down, Andrew.
No, you know, this is a big step for all of us, and thank you all. And there was some, some error on, on our wording, and, and I'm glad everybody caught that, you know, I think we all did.
It's okay.
But I think we're good now. We have it on the ballot the right way, and I think we're, we're good to go. And again, just thank you all. Thank you, Brent, Jason, everybody, appreciate it.
And, you know, I had had a conversation with the, the mayor and, and we reminded, we were reminded that even if we disagree or something just doesn't look right, what we need to remember is to never stop communicating and, 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 you know, just working through those things. So I'm just really happy that you all did that.
Yeah. And again, you know, this may change to where we do get extra monies and we can increase, but right now, I think, again, we'll, we'll agree to disagree, but at least right now, we can say that everybody's can get some. Yeah, we may get more, but we're trying to start a service and, and, you know, the mayor was, from Taos, was okay with that. He was like, no, I understand where you guys are coming from. It was a good conversation.
Yes.
Here we are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2022-46, Proclaiming Calling For An Election To Be Held In Conjunction With The General Election, November 8, 2022, To Impose A Quarter Cent County Gross Receipts Tax For Fire And EMS.
Great. I will second. Great. There's a motion and a second, and call for the, oh, any discussion, Commissioners? Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please, Madam Court?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Heck, yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Great. Okay, nice, guys. Moving forward. Now we are on 11. Contracts, Agreements, MOUs And Bids, Discussion, Consideration And Decision Regarding Commission Approval, Authorizing The County Manager To Sign The Final Contract And For, is it Haci Construction? Am I saying that right?
Right.
Haci Construction To Provide All Labor Materials To Construct The Awas Calientes Road Bridge Percipation Project Located At New Mexico 570, MPO 662, In The Amount Of $1,124,226, Exclusive Of GRTs. And before us is Mr. Silva, Deputy County Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Bee Hill, thank you for allowing me to present. Vice Chair Brush, Commissioner Fambro, Commissioner O'Donnell. Yeah, I signed before you today just to kind of speak to the, the bridge. And as you guys, as, as a commission, I've come before you before to identify that this bridge, original estimate was $495,000. Due to COVID and other identifying factors, it has increased to one point, well, originally this was about 1.2. I've negotiated it down $100,000 to where we're at right now. But it's, I can't say the severity of what we need to complete right now. We don't have the, the, the community, the 30 residents that reside in Pilad that cross this bridge on a daily basis, don't have the privileges as a lot of us do, where they, they can have either a propane truck go across there, first responders is the, is the immediate need. That bridge is in much disrepair, and at this time, you know, I know that this has probably been kind of a work in progress since 2012, I believe. So right now, this is a step to, to complete this and allow this bridge to be constructed, where this revitalization of this bridge to be completed, so we start the next phase of the, of Awas Caliente, the bridge, it's going to acquire, that's going to be a close to $11 million project. But for this to happen, this would help us with at least the two-year span till we can finish the design, find funding. But then this would allow any contractors to go across the bridge to start creating this element of the next structure and phasing of this bridge. So I stand for any questions? You know, I, I guess, I just want to point out, a lot of this that comes through here with these quantities and units that have increased this by almost $700,000 was the treated lumber. That was a, was an increase. And then the method of work within the waterway. He's going to need to perform divers, we're going to have to, there're going to be areas that they're going to have to pump out and create a barrier amongst peers to support and shore up those areas. So it's the method that's coming into this and the, and the identify work that has kind of changed a little bit. But a lot of this is supply chain issues and the treated lumber, that's, that's increased this by quite a bit. So I stand for any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners, before I make a comment? I wanted to thank you, Mr. Silva, because I know you've been very diligent in moving this forward. I know there are others, I mean, since, what did you say, 2012, this has been taking place? I think the residents of Pilad have been super patient and, and, you know, I, I just, I'm really excited that we're moving forward.
Great.
You mentioned for various reasons, this was crucial. I hear it all the time. And I know that Pilad is no longer in my district, but as we all say as Commissioners, we're Commissioners for the entire community, so excited.
If it's my district, we serve the entire
We serve the entire, thank you, Commissioner Fambro. So just very excited, just want to thank you for being very diligent.
Appreciate it.
Yes. Commissioners, is there any, anything else? If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brush?
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro?
Yes.
Chair of the Hill?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on, we've got the counter, I'm sorry, the county's manager report, update to county commission on various items affecting Taos County.
Please, Mr. Haramio.
All right, thank you. Today will be a little bit of a tag team approach. We did receive some good news this morning from Mortgage Finance Authority. Their review has been completed for the draft Affordable Housing Ordinance, so it's in So, it's in compliance with American Housing Affordable Housing Act and rules. So, it, the next step would be send it over to our internal legal counsel for their final review before we schedule this, before the commission, and give it its first reading. And I'd also like to do a first reading, and then probably do a public hearing. So, we'll work with Ms. Romero, Mr. Ortiz, and his staff on getting that scheduled. So, that is good news. The other item that I would like to also begin with is our discussion. Mr. Cordova is going to help with this item, as we've had two resignations from the Health Council. And so, we're, we're looking to replace both of those individuals on the Health Council. The one from District Four and the one from District Five have both resigned. So, Mr. Cordova can answer any, if there's any specific questions to that. That's why I asked him to be here.
Mr. Cordova, it's good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate your time. I do come before you asking, well, first of all, good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us this time. I do come before you this morning due to the Health Council. We have two vacant, as Brent said, and Mr. Adamio said. I just want to make sure that, one, Commissioner Brush, that you had your two letters of interest from two individuals in the community. If not, I wanted to make sure that we get them to you. I talked to the both individuals, and they said they had forwarded them. So, I did not bring, I apologize. I did not bring the resolution or anything with me. I was in the jail, guys. I apologize for, I just kind of had made a request with one of the, the things. I made a request. So, I didn't come prepared. I apologize for that. I thought this would be a longer meeting. I looked at the time. I said, wow, we're already this session.
We're moving fast.
Yeah, we're moving fast today. I bet you guys all appreciate that. But even with saying that, I just want to make sure, Commissioner Brush, that you do have those two. If not, I will forward them to you. There was one in Commissioner O'Donnell's also, that we had a resignation kind of abruptly, that I'd like to speak to you as well. I know you may have had somebody in mind as well, but I would ask that we do announce it in tomorrow's Healthcare Council meeting for any other candidates to apply for your district as well. Yours has been, Commissioner Brush, yours has been announced a few times now. We've put it through our chain email, as well as in our, in our open meetings, asking for any letters of interest, and those are the two who response have come back. I think there was some miscommunication that I want to reiterate in tomorrow's Health Council meeting, that they do have to represent your district, because I did get a couple that weren't in, in, in those districts. So, I just want to make sure they understand that, that they are your appointee, that they represent you and in your district to follow that suit. Okay? I do stand for any questions at this time?
Any questions, commissioners?
I, I have no one yet, and I don't think the alternate is, has, I have, I need to. And is it procedure? You'll announce it. Can you somehow get a public announcement?
If that's the request of the commissioners, we can. I believe the resolution kind of states to put it out, if you would. We've always used the Health Council. Of course, those people are, you know, embedded and kind of in contact with us, at least through the monthly meetings for that purpose. We did send out a mass email, you know, Commissioner Brush's for that as well. We had, you know, limited response to it. We did have some, but if, if we can, we can put out in other areas in the community for this as well.
Could you have something formal, a couple sentences for, if District Four is taken care of for District Five, so that I can use that formal letter of request and, and let my constituents know?
Sure.
If you could help me with that?
You got it. No problem. Any other questions I can answer?
Just real quick, Madam Chair, thank you so much, Mr. Cordova, for moving this forward. The, so, at least for District Four, where we already have a couple of strong letters, will that then be up for vote on our next commission meeting? So, we can get that, that representative seated and up and going?
It probably will be. We're going to announce it tomorrow.
Okay.
At the Health Council meeting.
Thank you.
Push forward for September 6.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova.
The next item that we're going to give the commission an update on is on La Morada Road. And then, we'll segue into the FLAP grants. So, there's been a lot of progress between those two. Mr. Silva is heavily involved on both of those projects. Those are projects, so we have the right-of-way. It's all drawn up for La Morada Road. We just need to purchase those right-of-ways from, there's three separate property owners. So, we are pushing on our engineering team to get that accomplished, and we're coming into the construction season. So, we also need to get that out to bid. So, we do have the money to purchase those right-of-ways. It's approximately a little over $12,000. And we have all the, the meets and bounds. Everything is, is ready to go. We just need to execute that. And I know, speaking of what Dr. told us a couple weeks ago, you know, they, on their outside council has finished their review process as well. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Silva to give us an update on FLAP, the FLAP.
Mr. Silva, may I, before you proceed, can you give us a general idea on the timeline for La Morada? Because I know there's some critical concerns, like the Aseca, for example.
Yeah. The Maradoma in that area won't allow us to work in there till October 1st. So, so it's, we're gonna, we have some time to kind of fulfill this. Like, like County Manager Adamio mentioned, we're in the process of trying to complete the purchase agreements. So, we've already have the surveys done, the valuation, land evaluation has already been, appraisal, everything has been completed to date. We're just waiting on just the two purchase agreements between the two property owners adjacent to this property, where the realignment of this project's going to happen.
So, our hope is in October, we'll be ready to go.
Yes. So, by that time, that would be the optimum time, that there's not going to be no, no water that's going to be dispersed through that area, coming off of the reservoir, or however the, the, in, in that manner, that was the request by the Maradoma to, to be that would, first opening day would be October 1st. In that, that would start the realignment of the, the Secia, and moving the road where it currently sits on the Campo Santo over to the, shifting the whole road over. And then, that would allow, we probably would have to probably at that point pave in the spring. So, the contractor probably overlap. But at that point, anything that's dealing within the waterway of the Secias would be completed, and that we wouldn't halve any runoff or any dispersment of water through the Secias in, in the springtime.
Thank you.
So, so timeline of that would work perfectly.
Thank you for the details, and it's, it's just good for the public to know.
Yes.
You know, all that goes into it. And it's not just simply that we're, you know, sitting on it. There's a request being made. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. To speak to the FLAP projects, right now, we're currently C110 is nearing the end of this project. We're currently in the process of both two-inch mats have, with the FDR, the full recognition work has been completed on that project. The paving has been completed up to date with the two, two two-inch mats that have gone there. So, we'd have a total of a four-inch base of, of this roadway, which can support, you know, construction traffic and any development that may go out in this area. Right now, what's being completed this week on the schedule of events is the two-and-a-half-foot walking path is being constructed, our base course. So, now, this is one of the roads within Taos County that's going to have an allowable walking path. It's still, you know, I mean, it's not optimum how you would see in other cities, but, you know, without having to purchase land acquisition, which it gets expensive for, for this, the project would dwindle down. We probably would, purchasing all the property, we would probably wouldn't be able to fulfill the project. So, but, you know, we will have a two-hundred-foot walking path for the residents that may utilize the monument and, and walk, as, as this sits right now. So, the walking path is being completed. Fox sale is going to be completed by 23. The striping is scheduled for the 26th of August. And then, the last would be the, the guardrail installation. Original proposed completion of this project was August 5th. But due to the monsoon season and, you know, the exorbitant rain that we've seen over the last month, the contractor is within his parameters of the contract, and he will, it, he will finish this within a lot of time due to the wet, bad weather days and that caused for the delays in construction. Other than that, that's pretty much kind of closes up that project. And we will, right now, is maybe some of you may have known or have seen, I don't know if we're not getting too many calls, and we've done a great job of messaging. But the John Donne Bridge has full closure right now to allow the, the bridge over the Rio Honda to be reconstructed. That's going to be the demo of the bridge, and then the reconstruction of, of that small bridge. And then, the revitalization of the, the John Donne Bridge, which is, that's going to have scaffolding along the river and support with stripping off the paint, the catchment of lead, a paint that could be in the, in lead that we're not going to get into the waterway. So, there's a scaffolding that's going through there, and netting that's going to capture it, that's going to be repainted, guardrails, the decking's going to be replaced. The approach is going to be shored up, and any other elements that has, was identified when the original structural and engineered estimate. So, that's just some, some just, I would say just a facelift, put it that way, of what that bridge is going to look like. The main bridge is the Rio Honda, which is going to be the total reconstruction of a bridge that was constructed in 1920s with vigas. And it's, I think it's identified as the worst bridge in the state. So, it's in desperate need of repair. So, even though we are in the process of having foreclosure, and individuals aren't able to utilize this recreation area, a four-month timeline for the next 100 years can support their families and their children and everybody. So, it's been gracious so far that we haven't had much blowback, but I was worried that we did. We will.